I don't know. June 19th?
Do we have a court?
Yes, we do. All of it is free. We got four. We're opening tonight for the public hearing for application for digital use permit by LimePro Land Survey for an office space and gift shop at 1076 Route 109, MAP 233 lot 020.
I'm wondering if we should call that an art studio. Does it matter?
Doesn't make any difference to me.
It's gonna be a little bit of a art studio and gift shop.
What we'll do is, the applicant's here?
Yes.
The applicant will explain to us what it is they're gonna do. And then they'll field any questions from the public. Afterwards, we'll close the public hearing and then the planning board will have their questions and then blah, 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 blah. So, who's gonna speak to this?
Begin. But yes, as I think everybody in this room knows anyways, I'm Joe Stanley of LimePro Land Survey. Just have a little Land Survey outfit. Currently based out of Chapley, out of my home, but we've been working over the last year or two to move everything over to Mr. Crowley's property over on 109. It'd just be a better situation for me. There's some foot traffic up there. Getting me out of the distractions of my own home is a big part of it for me. Should be good for everybody involved. We'd originally gotten a permit on the same property for the same business, but it was going to be in the building adjacent to the one we're hoping to move into now. It was gonna be above the Crowley Bear Restaurant. And once the other building on the property came open, formerly a residence, we just felt like it was a better opportunity for us. First floor access rather than going up the staircase. You know, our own shingle basically in a different building rather than being a secondary business to the restaurant. And there's plenty of space in that particular building, so I sort of came up with the idea to have my mother, who's a retired art teacher, be able to do some of her arts and crafts stuff that she's always wanted to do in the grander building.
On the chair.
And this is my mother here, Brenda Stanley.
Hi, I'm a retired art educator and artist.
How many people you're employed? How often will you be open?
You know, we're always hoping things will get a little bit better. We currently just have one, I have one other full-time employee that works with me. He's a part owner in the business. And then we have one part-time employee that spends 10, 20 hours a week. But generally, it's just the two of us. Usually, we're the third guy's and whatever it is because we need him out on a job site somewhere for measurements. He doesn't do any work on rainy days or anything there. If things go well, I could see us in the foreseeable future adding one, maybe two full-time people. If things went really well, but I don't foresee it ever becoming much more than that. You know, I used to be involved with a company that had 10 to 12 employees doing this kind of work. And I'm not really looking for that type of presence and that amount of headaches. I want a small shop that I can handle.
All right, what's the story with the gift shop slash studio slash?
I thought, well, being retired, I've had more time since my husband passed away to just get used to all that free time. So I've been doing some artwork and I want to try to sell some of the work. I have a lot of art educators and former students that are doing the work. So maybe in there, have some of their work and some gift things because there are a lot of people, it seems like in the Lakes region, that might take opportunity to that. I know when I need something, I don't want to have to go out to mall or to bitter verge. It'd be nice to have something out here.
In terms of gifts?
Yeah, in terms of gifts.
Now, would you also have to sell art supplies too, maybe, or?
I don't know.
No?
I mean, if people were interested? You know, I thought initially maybe a few little things, like maybe sketchbooks for kids, camp journals, maybe little tiny work collars that if somebody was by the lake. I mean, as an artist myself, sometimes I get someplace and I didn't bring things. That might be a possibility. But I'm just gonna try it out first and see how things go before I jump in full time.
All right, is there anyone from the public who has any comments and/or questions?
Trevor, better be quiet.
No? Well, then we'll close the public hearing aspect of this and we'll load up the planning board. Anyone have any comments, questions for these people?
First of all, one of the requests that I got, not to catch you off, but we did have a request as part of the application checklist for copies of the deed. So I've got three or four in here. I don't know if anybody will read it, but it's, there it is. It's part of our application. And I do have a second version of the sketch. Jim has been hard at work doing some landscaping and putting some plants and new things. So I updated the sketch today to show what, you know, more realistically it's turned out looking like. You know, we're very, very similar to the previous sketch, but I just wanted to make sure if any of you have been up to see it recently that I've got something that...
The new sign-out front, who's that gonna be for?
Excuse me, that's not his time, that's two posts.
What are they gonna be doing, holding up what?
They're two posts.
Okay.
Let me, can I address that now that you brought it up?
That's where he hooks his horse.
May I address that now that you brought that subject up?
Doesn't have anything to do with this?
Yes, sir.
All right, then go ahead.
Mr. Stanley, the last meeting said that he wasn't gonna have a sign-out front because he had one already on my side.
Right.
What Mr. Stanley didn't know is when he sent that comment in here at that meeting that I was planning on putting a sign-out front. And the issue I came into, I came in to speak to the code enforcement officer. The issue was I needed to get my landscaping done, I needed my entrance done, need to get rid of the driveway. And if I was gonna put a sign in, now was the time to put a sign in. Well, the discussion went on and he says, "Well, technically, you can't put a sign in until it gets approved." I said, "Well, how about putting some, just posting so I can get it in the ground and I will deal with it?" But we dealt with this through the code enforcement office because I was very concerned about somebody coming in, like you did say. You weren't here at last meeting and you said there was gonna be no sign. So I didn't do anything without first discussing it with the code enforcement office, which when I left, he gave me permission to put two posts in. Quote, "Two posts."
And they're set back enough in the road to lock, yeah, just?
Put two posts, yeah.
Just checking. Okay. Now, this deed, you're not buying this building from them, you're just...
No, it was just part of the checklist for conditional use submission. Supposed to have a current copy of the deed. And Brenda said she looked in the file and we didn't have one, so we brought it in just to make sure we met the submission criteria.
Yeah, so I see that the old driveway was blocked off.
Removed.
Removed. And they're gonna come in, the one just to the right of it, to swing over to the lot then, huh?
And the whole front of the house is gonna be, there's gonna be parking space for nine vehicles off the road, off the street coming in. And the rest is gonna be landscaped accordingly, you know, facing the front of the structure.
Gotcha. Is that gonna be paved or gravelled?
Right now, it's gonna be paved because we're spending considerable amount of money revamping the structure, bringing it up to standards. But I do have, it's gravelled right now and I do have intention of next year paving that whole section up, up behind the dock area, beyond the office.
Now, Kenny, because it's no longer gonna be a residence, it's gonna be more or less a commercial building. Does it need extra kind of something, you know, smoke detectors or alarm or this, that, or the next thing?
Yeah, once they get approval from you guys, we'll pull a building permit for change of occupancies. The bigger thing maybe via separation between the art studio, mercantile, and the land savers office, which would be business.
We're talking like five-inch drive-off, something like that?
Something like that, probably. We'll just take a look at the separations. Then we can really sit down, take a look at the use of the app. Is it a studio or just a retail and just get a defined use for that? And then we can really get the separation to it. They've already started the handicap entrances and stuff like that.
Joe, I know I brought it up a couple of weeks ago, we were talking about this idea of the handicap park or the studio.
Yep.
And I heard Kenny just say that it was handicapped access. I think there was a plural in there, but I guess in my mind, when I go by, I see steps going up into that studio, but you know, it's under construction, so it may change. But I'm just curious as to how that's gonna be and I very much would love to see that it's handicapped over there.
Yeah, that's the studio side. I think there's like one granite step there.
Is there any steps going in? What we're gonna do is we're gonna grade back the walkway, handicap enough so we can get a wheelchair in and up over. As well as, well, you have two different heights. The main house is up at a certain height and then you, where you come down into the walkway to go into the art area. There's a bunch of some steps going down. We're making a handicapped ramp right alongside the stairs to get upstairs also.
Anyone else? Kenny, anything to throw on? Pardon me?
Need the standards?
I guess so. I mean, if...
We didn't know if I...
Oh, it's, this is all right. I wouldn't expect to call crap. Although we listen to Stonehenge more, right?
Mr. Crowley.
Not the other side.
No, that house has been empty for a couple of years.
Mr. Crowley.
He's two, Roy's two houses now, Trachten.
Yeah. In the newer one?
There's one house between there.
Sort of. All right, well, I guess, yeah, who would like to read the standards here?
I'll read them.
Tom, go, go.
We're on page 85, 6.6, 3.7. Standards applicable to conditional use. A, can you do the NA for me, please? Not applicable.
Yeah, NA.
B, NA. Use will conserve show cover, no show cover. C, use is consistent with the comprehensive plan, yes. Traffic access to the site, these standards, yes. Site design is in components, NA, with municipal flood control. F, adequate provision for disposal of all wastewater and solid waste has been made.
What is the story on the septic system?
The design load really hasn't changed any compared to the family that was living there. With record count and the business and the art studio really has a low count of gallons per day.
All right, so you're happy?
Yep.
So then, yes.
G, hazardous materials not applicable. H, stone wall drainage system.
Well, now, wait one second. Are you gonna be doing any kind of blueprints or anything?
We do have a 48-inch wide plot or what, it's more like a conventional perimeter. It's not like an old ammonia blueprint.
Not that kind of stuff?
No.
All right, okay. So you're writing it? H?
Can we back up, what about on the art side of that?
I have pastels and acrylics, which are water-based, which I use most of the time. So I don't, I don't usually get into oils.
It's all paint, yeah.
So it would be mostly all acrylic.
And no paint thinners, you're not gonna be restoring a works of art or anything, are you?
No.
Like red paints, lost ones?
I'd find someone has somebody else do that.
So they're not asking tell no stuff like that necessarily?
Not that I play anyone, I took a long time.
H, stone wall drainage system. I would think it's not really applicable because it's an existing residence.
Right, but he is doing some landscaping and grading now and...
Not changing the surface, service?
Yeah, there's gonna be a little bit more, well, we're losing part of a driveway, but we're gaining some more parking areas.
I thought that was grout.
Grouts, what if it ends up being something else?
I would think the issue would be that we're not throwing water out onto 109.
Right.
They can guarantee that that isn't gonna happen.
Yeah, well, I wanna make sure that no water needs the site more so than it did before.
We haven't changed any contours that would divert water. 99%, 90% of the water goes to the back of the building, goes to the back of the parking lot, which Mother Nature is always taking care of.
Right, okay.
Is there a drainage soil there, Jim?
Yes, there's drainage from the state and gullies. Been put in years ago.
Well, that's good.
Is H NA?
Yeah, now, H is...
Stone wall drainage, yeah.
Yeah, there'll be no adverse impact.
I, adequate provision for control of soil erosion and sanitation has been made, NA.
And it's been covered with the stone wall drainage.
Right, so I'd say, yeah, it's fine.
J, adequate well supply to meet the demands proposed use and provide protection purposes.
How is the well there?
The well is an irrigation well. It's at 3.5 gallons per minute and 94 feet deep.
Just serves that house?
Just serves that house.
Okay. And there's never been an issue with it before? As far as, no complaints?
No complaints. When I had, when I rented it out to the last tenants, we did a water test, the water test came back fine.
All right. What kind of fire protection? What kind of, is there gonna need to be something like sprinklers or anything, do you know, or?
No, it wouldn't need to be sprinklers, it's the existing building. It doesn't meet this height and area table to require it. They'll have a notification, a smoke detector system in there for it. And it'd be too small to require a call-out system.
All right.
Ideally, it would be a Knox box system that would allow the fire department entry when they were closed.
Just for your own information, that building is equipped with a burglar on-fire alarm, cold weather devices that go to a central dispatch station, which has always been in effect and will remain in effect.
Super. All right, so then that was a yes, okay.
K, provisions for bogus strips and on-site landscaping, providing adequate protection to neighboring properties and detrimental features.
Well, he's in that process right now. You cleaned up the old driveway, moving, yeah, good.
L, alter phone standards in this ordinance applicable to proposed use will be met. Check. M, archaeological and historic resources, NA.
All right. Now, are there any conditions that the board wants to put on this operation?
I just have one question just to clarify. The uses, or what uses interior to that proposed main entrance will be serviced by that main entrance? Apple Core Dogs and LimePro and the art supply store, or the art store?
The road entrance?
Yeah. Those three.
Is that, yeah, that's my understanding you have. You good with that, Joe? You just looking for clarity, so it's just, it's those three businesses that are utilizing that one entrance?
It's gonna basically stay the way you're gonna... Excuse me for my nice cellphone. Got a little upset.
Chip usually makes she answer it on speaker.
I could go to this curb now. It's a bucket one, the phone is smaller than yours.
All right, so you're all set?
Yeah.
Okay. So...
If he's gonna pave the parking area, he's gonna commit to the permit for that.
Right, if that's what they wanna do down the road. I don't know, we're not gonna require that they pay for the ride, I think, yet. And that would be, you know, he'd come in the canyon for that, so we don't have to worry about that. You know, the fire, all the life safety, fire safety stuff will have to be done, but that'll be addressed when they come in for the permits.
Correct.
So do you see anything that we need to put some condition on this application?
No, that looks seems like a good, reasonable use, low traffic, volume, could use of the property.
All right then.
And the sign would just gonna be forgotten?
Yeah, yes. If, Tom, throw the rest aside.
Permit to put 30 posts.
Partisanal purpose.
All right then, I guess we're looking for motion.
I vote we approve the conditional use permit for, what are we actually calling this? For LimePro Land Survey LLC, LimeSurveying LLC for conditional use permit to relocate the survey office from, into an existing residence on the property of... What do you call it?
Sorry, let's re-read the Thomas.
It's Apple Core LLC.
Oh, yeah. MAP 223 lot 24.
And do we want to throw in gift shop there?
And the art studio, I think, gift shop attached.
Second. Any further discussion, comments? All's in favor of I? All's opposed, N? Good luck.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So when's opening day?
I don't know yet.
Why? What's that?
We still got some work to do.
Oh, all right.
Hopefully in middle of July sometime.
Good enough.
Boy, I've got a couple of extra looks.
No.
Now I'm grabbing a phone.
I left a point in the car.
You got this, right?
I turned anything into it. Yeah. Because that always happens. Even I think you turned it off and you didn't. I didn't say it.
You're welcome, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it very much.
Now, let's jump back to... Amy Fairfield, 10 hemlock line map, 1461.
Guys later.
Bye-bye now.
017 of BPL.
It's actually a couple of sheds within a hundred feet. I think the garage may actually have road setback issues.
What, there's snow, hasn't melted yet? Wow, these people. Arctic Circle? Hemlock, what layers is this on?
Mosses of 13.
Oh, mosses. My guess is that's a stick build, yeah. What's the closest this place is to the shore now? Ooh, nice.
61 feet. I'd have to scale that to be accurate for that. They're totally eliminating this shed, this was the metal shed that's going around. This garage, they want to demo and build this new garage right there. So this is a 100-foot setback issue, totally demoed, gone. This is a 50-foot straight setback. This is the 100-foot that cuts through it. So some of this counts within 100 feet and 30%, some of it doesn't. That's within the road setback.
This is 50, oh, so it's the road setback, yeah.
Yeah, so they got both issues there.
But they're moving further away from the road to just...
5, 9, 6, 1.
Well, yeah, it looks like maybe just a little bit less of the building is within the...
Right, right, square footage wise, there's a part of it that comes out of it.
So it's, it's a little bit better, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
86 on that, oh, jeez.
So that's the 50-foot setback line there, the 10's down the sides, and then this is the 100-foot.
Oh, wait, the purple is a shot.
You mean the 100, yeah.
Oh, all right, all right, I got you.
And then this is the 50, so they overlap each other.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I think it's...
That's the metal shed. I thought I had distance on to that. But that's what they proposed to build is this here. So this is a 100-foot setback from the water, so this is within 100-foot setback. This is out of the 100-foot, and this is the 50-foot setback from the road, which is this line here. So all of the shed is known to fall from the road, only half of it is from the water. So this disappears, just disappears, and they will...
13.
5 foot, 9 inch, 12 foot, now with a 9, 6 foot launch. So it's a little better. Square footage wise though, you get rid of a lot more out of that setback area than...
You're getting rid of this.
And you're getting rid of that.
Is this another shed over here? Oh, that's a different property, sorry.
No, I think that's, that's the property, that's the water side. No, I think that's...
It's a dock.
Yeah, dock.
There's like a, you know, a platform...
To get to it.
That goes out to the dock, maybe. A little gas boat. Those pictures give you any indication of what the foundation or what its light hold to the...
On the street side?
Yeah.
That's it right there with the garage kinda sketched in.
The street kinda drains down to the...
Shadow's here.
Yeah, yeah. And as you go up the road, it's right there, it gets higher and higher and higher.
It's not drab.
No, it isn't. But the drainage comes down anyway.
You're gonna be okay.
Well, maybe we can address that drainage with, if we grant this. There you go, one of those.
This is 100 feet from the lake.
Yeah.
If he decides that the garage is 24 deep, what is this one?
24, 24, 24, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And this is gonna be taken up to 30% expansion then?
I think they still have a bunch left. It's a big house.
A 10% or 2% expansion, all right.
Looks like there's 16% left, or at least take a half of it now.
Is this a year round?
Yes.
Which is typical for a size of a garage, two-car garage.
Depends what you drive, but 24-24 is generally a small package garage. They designed the building code around a 24-24 that doesn't allow frost walls and things like that. It's kind of exempt from a lot of stuff. This one wouldn't be because it's attached to the house though.
Oh, it is attached. It's not gonna be freestanding?
No, no, it's attached to it.
So take it off the deck?
Just the side part of the deck?
Correct, that, out of the deck, just...
The rest of the deck.
Yeah, yeah. Full-size pickup with a plow wouldn't fit into a 24-foot garage easily, the newer ones. Be able to walk around in that stuff.
Well, what do you guys wanna do?
What's the recommendation?
I mean, from the old softie?
Yeah.
What do you think?
It looks like it's less non-conforming.
Yeah.
Get rid of that shed that's down by the water. So it's a runoff from that, so what, what are they gonna do with that shed?
Revegetate.
Dynamite.
And they've already contacted your county for the.
Have they?
The whole site needs a.
Yeah, good, good, because I was gonna throw that in if, if it wasn't addressed.
Yeah.
Is there gonna be less or more or about the same amount of impervious as far as building roof wise? Maybe a little more.
Probably about the same, it's all in a paved area now, and it's two buildings.
Oh, paved, like blacktop or concrete, not gravel?
Paved, I believe it's paved.
Oh, alright.
Currently eighteen point four percent, no vegetated, it'll be nineteen seven when they're done.
Alright, that's okay.
So it's, it's less than the twenty percent.
And if we have, uh, York County come in and give them some kind of a plan, then.
Do a garden rooftop.
That'll be a plan. Garden rooftop.
Oh, yeah.
Good idea. Tom, question?
No, I, I was gonna make a motion.
Oh, alright.
We approve the best possible location, application for Amy Fairfield, ten Hemlock Lane, the drawings that we've been showing tonight. With the stipulation that York County saw the wall absent with stormwater drainage issues.
And revegetation?
Yeah, revegetation.
Do you have to include in there getting rid of the sheds and things like that, or is that just part of the whole deal? That's part of the package.
Yeah, it's on the plan to be removed. And the garage, the bay they have now also is to be removed, so those two would be eliminated, the new one proposed. And York County working on a plan, which I would say still would include the drip line trenching all the way around it.
Are you thinking the process of them being moved?
Is there a second?
Like without it being disruptive?
In, in the motion, let's say. Now, any further discussion, comments, things you want to throw in? We're all sent with, if they go by the proposed plan, which has knocked down both, or the shed by the water, the old little garage in back, tear down those, put this new twenty-four by twenty-four next to the house. York County saw the water is gonna help with stormwater drainage and revegetation. Kenny's thinking drip trenches around the place. Anything else?
Do you, do you have to put in that they have to take that shit then? The one towards the front?
It, it was their application to relocate that into the new garage, so they wanted to have that.
Using square footage?
To, to move it into there. Otherwise, if they weren't ripping down the two garages, they wouldn't need plan and vote review, it would just be a thirty percent addition. But in order for the two things to be removed and relocated into the new addition, it is through you guys.
Because they are encroaching a little bit on the setback from the road, but not as much as it was. And they're within the hundred feet of the water. So we're comfortable with, with Tom's motion then? Nothing else to add? Alright, then all's in favor, I. All's opposed, Nate. Done deal, another dream fulfilled. God, are we wonderful? What's up? Ash Cove. What's the story with those guys? Made it?
What was that? No.
Oh, look at me, I didn't make the minutes, I didn't make the, what is this?
That's all business.
That's the assistant chair's work.
Uh, so we haven't heard anything more on that?
No.
Alright then, what about the stormwater management? Any movement on that? Have you all had a chance to produce it? Art didn't bring anything, but I said that's fine, I came right to the dishwasher. That's alright, as long as you're here, this accounts.
Can we go with the first few, four pages to make a little dent here? Anybody?
Tonight?
Four a' clock, right? What time is it?
I don't know. Who's going to grab it tonight?
I am, it's almost eight o'clock now.
Did I miss a minute?
Let's just do it.
I didn't do the minutes yet.
Is anybody opposed to that?
Oh, not.
I don't know.
I said.
Which we do, minutes or we don't?
Yeah, let's get the minutes out of the way, mine was, well, yeah, the public hearing, I did that first, and I didn't do the minutes yet, so take it with, there is minutes, and then I'll accept the.
See you for a second.
Andy, we never take care of the minutes from a couple of months ago. That was the one, there's a lot of couple of us there. You have the.
If you, if you had his present, but you're not in the minutes anywhere, it's most likely weren't here.
Did I beat you on that?
No.
Oh.
You just discuss it. The importance of doing things like second emotions to be.
Oh, I see, okay, you take turns. It's really funny.
I'm moving to second minutes.
Second.
Can you change the corrections? Alright then, all's in favor, I. All's opposed, Nate. Done deal.
I'd like to point out.
Oh, too late.
I'd like to point out to the chairman that we adjourned at seven oh three last time.
He says eight oh one.
We had a lengthy agenda.
Hold that. It was called the order, not ahead, it says you adjourned at eight oh one.
Where are you? Never mind, sir.
Hey, were you quitting up? Oh no, you wanna drag out this.
Eight o'clock.
This mess. So what, now is this gonna be a standalone ordinance?
No. So then, that's why, if you look at the numbers.
I, I saw those, but alright.
Plugged in, what, what we did find toward the end was Jess and Paul felt that it was a little wordy, and there is some repetition here with some of the, well, like stormwater stuff that's in the ordinance. And to that point, and also to the point of some sections are, would only be triggered on a site plan review. So we were thinking of maybe plugging that into site plan.
Taking those out of this?
Yes.
Run out of, to five twenty-five, put them over?
Yeah, to, to kinda streamline this.
Gotcha, gotcha.
And, and I think as we go through, we'll find those areas of repetition that they.
Yeah, because we'll have to delete whatever is in here that, you know, that that we're not gonna be using, or that we have to supersede or something.
Right.
My other question was, I don't know why you why you did the lining out comparing these two, because this is just another draft, you know? This is nothing that Tom gets, we don't have it, do it, it's just.
It was just an internal.
Alright.
Device so that we could find out what may change.
I just want you guys to work on your work for yourselves.
Going through this whole thing, Tom, when I was looking at it, it seemed to me that things get cleared up. You know, the way the wording and all those kinds of things in, in a lot of places. But I, I didn't pick up on any tremendous amount of change from the, the previous draft that we have been working on. I mean, maybe I'm, maybe I'm not right, I don't know, but that was my gut sense.
Well, the big thing that we did was try to make uniformity between Forest Bell's language and, and our own ordinance, because we had some pieces in our, in the, the work that JT Lockman helped us with, I think that were state wording device from the, derived from the state stormwater management guidelines, and we, we tried to get on one stream with that and just put it all in with Forest Bell kind of language. Because we, we stayed with Forest Bell's hierarchies of incidental and meaning low threshold disturbance and non-incidental, which was the higher level of disturbance, which were the key terms in this, from which everything else kinda derives. So when we, when we looked at, we, we went as far as even looking at the sample, as I mentioned last time, the sample application form on behalf of Kenny's work, just to offer up something as a model, and, which was in the state guidelines for LID, which we all had copies of the thing, yeah, there is. And it was within that application that we changed the wording from alternate, or basically an alternate, which was interchangeable with incidental and non-incidental, so. But it was quite a, it was quite a, it wasn't really interesting, I lost here with the level of detail that Paul's script was not to be understanding. So I told fellow board members the other day that when we get into this, Jess and Tom and Gavin are gonna be sitting on one side of the table, drinking other the same things, and you guys can just do whatever you want to.
Your family gonna come?
No, 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 we'll be available for comment. The quarter hour or something. Just have to jar, our memory, show it to us this afternoon. I didn't, I didn't bring my thermostat, I, the other two have already passed out, Tom. So they have it. It should, it should go pretty smoothly now. Paul went so far as to add footnotes to this thing, which we had never done in any document that I had ever powered up, so he, he described, you know, a document that, that the applicant can go and look at, and we checked all this stuff, which was very interesting to work. Because he felt it was important to, on behalf of the applicant, to have a source for these materials.
And you guys wanna keep these new definitions in here versus the definition section of the ordinance?
That was the thought, yeah, just because they, they pertain, you know, pretty much to this this area. I know what would be kind. We found it was useful, because there's some new terminology there that we weren't familiar with, and rather than follow through the definition section, that could be changed.
Does everybody have one for impervious surface, is that the same one? No.
No. We spent, if you folks recall, there was one section when we went to, when we attempted to go to a public area on this, and, was it last year?
Sometime last year, yeah, it was before, it was, it was like May, it was before Tom made it.
Yeah. And it was, and Paul pretty much dug us up and repaired us, and and that particular section that we, that he found fault with, that he was getting six different interpretations on, we spent a lot of time trying to clarify that, it was, it was unguardly. But we think we have worked it out. We were thinking, if anybody here is, is a good mathematician, or, or a grammarian, or whatever, there's a way that we can, when we get to this, you know what a Venn diagram is? Remember what Venn diagrams are for mathematics, from set theory? It's like, if you drew a circle, and, and you said every door in the room is, is within that circle, the circle representing the room, and then you, so that you'd have a large circle representing the room, and then you have three circles interior to that representing the three doors, or the two, yeah, three doors. It's a way of describing graphically sets and subsets. And what we found was, when you got into the notions of effective impervious area and disconnected impervious area, and total impervious area, it's, it was useful to, clarified our thinking immediately to have a, a little graphic representation of it, but. So no math majors in here. I did a crude one, and it seemed to help, but when we get there, we'll, we'll noodle around that, come up with something that I think we could, would, would really cut to the quick of that, that concept within this, embodied within this thing.
I tell you, reading this though, do you think just ordinary Joe Blow is gonna read this and decide to do his own stormwater management ordinance plan, or is he gonna, you know, have somebody who does it for a living go ahead and do it?
I, I see it, Chip, as mainly endorsing what we're now doing on a kind of a.
Page by case basis with.
Yeah, yeah, it's kind of authorizing us to do it, where have, have kind of been moving slowly toward doing on a, on a goodwill basis currently, but it's, it's basically making it a a procedure which applicants will have to follow from.
Right, but now we're telling.
Upon acceptance.
To go through, you know, AWWA, or York County Stormwater Water, or my guess is they would probably still wanna do that, because it just.
We, we thought on the lower level of disturbance that nothing much would change, and, and on the higher levels of disturbance, we you're just codifying, you know, the steps that they have to go through in terms of when, when an engineer might be needed relative to the scale of the project.
Right.
It was, it's pretty much basically putting this code in place that is loosely followed now at the goodwill of the applicant.
Right.
But with the larger things, inspiring their low impact development techniques into larger stormwater management projects where, where we didn't have that.
And it's gonna be for all new construction, not just within shoreline, correct?
No, it's, it's still limited to the three, three zones, yeah. You know, oh, it's page five, I think it is, yeah. Yeah, page five, I'm in the May fifth version, one of the page, page five.
Right.
Top of the page, they have shoreline zone, RP, commercial B, that should be.
Alright, well, your first sentence under general purpose is all new construction development should be designed to minimize blah, 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 blah. And it's got nothing there but in RP, shoreline, or commercial. So I think, well, we have to do something with the first sentence and general purpose. Because when I read that, I thought all new development.
Okay, well.
Then that's what anybody's gonna read, the first, they'll read the first sentence and they'll go, hey, wait a minute. Is this gonna be for the whole town? And then they have to wait till they get into five, and if five says just the three, then we have to make the two of these match lineup. So somehow we want to throw in.
Yeah, I mean, that, that first sentence is kind of a generic sentence, is it, yeah. Whatever, you can put it for anyone.
Well.
Those are my thoughts.
Anyway, I, I, we've got to let people know right off the tip, what we're, what we're looking at having this done.
Well, this isn't gonna be a stand, this is gonna be worked into the.
It's gonna be folded into the.
Yes, but this is what is gonna get folded in. Just about everything here. We're not, they've already done all the pick 'em and choose it. And so this. And so this is gonna get folded into this, the way it is now except for things that have lined out. And they're lined out because they were taken out of the original one here, just to let us know where if something wasn't here, it might not be here, or that maybe in a different spot.
Oh, may I suggest to that point that you just say, "All new construction and development shall be designed to minimize stormwater from the applicable zones." Is that okay?
Fine.
That would allow you to amend it.
Yeah, right, and then further, the further definition of the applicable zone to accommodate this file. Is that okay?
As long as it's addressed, sure.
Okay.
Did everyone get a chance to read through this? Well, how about if we... How about if we, for next time, we try and go through the first... At least, well, at least the first pages and all the definitions, and maybe up through page...
Page six through...
Yeah, through page six.
The rules of disturbance. That's kind of a inherent place to end.
Yeah. Let's try and go from page one to the middle of page six. Get a chance to read that between now and the next meeting. And then we'll pick it apart.
Which actually, the next meeting, I mean it, July 30th, beginning of...
I'm not gonna be here again, so it's up to you guys.
It's a tough week.
Yeah, why don't we call it off and have it, our next, we'll cancel the meeting on the third, and we'll go for whatever the next one is. Seventeenth? Good. All right, everybody happy with that? TV Land, you happy?
There's no meeting on the third.
No meeting on the third. We'll give you guys a break. So, between now and the seventeenth today?
It's not your time to read.
Yeah. Give you something to do on the third, and you wish you were here. Anything else? Anybody? And that's it for the agenda.
I would just suggest maybe try it on your own. If you have youngsters in the house, and they know it's about death, right?
We can try it.
Try that little means to diagram, so that you can understand what disconnected impervious cover is relative to effective and total.
Is that gonna be up through page six, or is that further down that line?
Well, we'll get right into it when we start to talk about what is this, what is this foolish definition, you know? And I'll work on...
Oh, okay, okay. We'll get into the definitions. All right, fine.
I'll work on my little drawing, see if I can refine it.
All right. Got that? That's also your second. Venn diagram for the definition. All right, that's it? Good night, Cable Land. We'll see ya. See ya.